Ladies and gentlemen, this is John Phillips. He is the publisher of Folio Weekly and he is now a city council candidate here in District 7 in Jacksonville. Thank you for joining us, John.
My pleasure, former publisher.
Former publisher, yes. You've transitioned it over to your wife Angela, lovely lady. Question number one, you have an active law practice, you do the work here at Folio, you're a husband and a father, now you're running for city council. Where do you find the energy and how do you balance your time and schedule?
Right, you know, the energy has come from the work we do, right? When, I guess dating back to November 23rd, 2012, when Jordan Davis was shot and, you know, now Congresswoman Lucy McBeth kind of took me out of my bubble and she found energy, right? And when a mother who lost their child continues to get up and find energy, it can become contagious. And through the fight of wrongful death and civil rights, we had to find energy. And then, you know, adding becoming a father and raising kids through this, that in and of itself is motivating. Now, we waited, you know, there's been some requests for me to run before.
Sure.
And, you know, to some extent, the timing of them being in school now, in public school in particular, is also, you know, kind of part of the equation. So, you know, we've built a firm with 20-plus employees, seven lawyers, I've divested in Folio, there's time to do this. And one thing that was even more motivating is, look, Sheldon, this one thing to look back or handle cases and get justice after the fact, right? To take families through the civil justice system or criminal justice system, it's another to get them before it happens. And with a thousand murders in seven years, I can save one pretty quick.
Yeah.
You know, we properly activate mad dads, we properly activate some of these core groups and show them how to get city funding, them being on the block and knowing these families will pretty quickly create an action and engaging, you know, the business community and the underprivileged to join hands, which we've done. Also, you know, not only saves lives but can help, you know, the city heal a little bit and become united and help develop it.
You know, with your practice as a lawyer, being so active in social justice, you've had the opportunity to kind of see how things work in this city, how laws are made, how policies are enacted. With your background as an attorney, do you feel that gives you sort of an inside track on the process? Do you think that, like, if you're coming into the city council later this year, are you coming in with an action plan? Like, do you know what you're gonna start doing from day one?
Yeah, in talking with former city council members, they reminded me that I'm one of 19 votes, right?
Yeah.
So, the possibility of enacting a legislation immediately depends on camaraderie and figuring out where we can go. Now, that said, there is something from me being a litigator and being an advocate and representing over 10,000 people, one by one, or even before that, representing businesses like Southeast Toyota and J and Family, in helping them through their problems, that I think, right now, one of the biggest issues in Jacksonville is the fact we have to have two Martin Luther King breakfasts and two press conferences regarding antisemitism, right? If we can't get hate on the same page and we can't have a city councilman, you know, put their arm around Ben Frazier and say, "All right, like, let's get you out of here. We heard you, we heard you, we'll vote, like, we'll take these one by one, we'll do something more reasonable." That can happen day one. You know, the community painting a building on the north, a business on the north side to raise property values and to raise morale, that can happen day one, I'll grab the paintbrush myself.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that, and the reputation that we're changing and me working with whoever's elected mayor to eliminate this strife between city council and the mayor's office and city council versus city council, I think, you know, that's part of the bridge that can change things by perception and reality.
It's true. In this city, it's generally perceived that the city council kind of exists as like a rubber stamp for the mayor's agenda. The mayor decides what to do and then the council goes along with it. To what extent, as a legislative body, can this city council act on their own, sort of taking the lead on certain issues rather than waiting for the mayor to lead?
Certainly, a lot of it, it seems like a lot of the agenda and the bully pulpit has been run, not necessarily by the mayor, but by prominent members of his staff, right?
Yeah.
The Brian Hughes, the Jordan Ellsbury's, the Tim Bakers in an indirect fashion.
Yes.
And actually standing up eye to eye, and, you know, the thing about me is, I stand eye to eye with millionaires and billionaires in my practice, but I stand, you know, eye to eye with people who have lost their children and people who have been arrested and people who, you know, have their backs against the wall. And being able to kind of have that experience, to be able to listen and learn and guide, but also standing up and speaking truth to power, you know, we've still gotta work with the mayor's office, but I've been actively contacted by people at city council and other staff and said, "We need somebody like you, we need help because the voice that you bring, the fearlessness which you bring, isn't common."
Yeah.
And I think that's one of the things that distinguishes me from, you know, from my opponents, and we're not running a negative campaign, but is relatively youth, and we need youth on city council. But I'm a different voice because there's few people in Jacksonville that I think you could say are fearless and are, certainly, I've had so many arrows in my back, some of which were deserved, that I don't care anymore. Like, I don't, I'm not beholden, I don't need, I don't need donors, I want them, you know, like, I wanna make this a people campaign, I don't need, you know, billionaire invitations into suites. Again, I wanna bridge, you know, Shad Khan as a constituent with, you know, others who need jobs as constituents and be financially prudent, but it's, you know, it's that that's my emphasis and we'll, you know, we'll work together if we can work together as a body. And it may be get there and I'm just driven crazy by the administration, but I think if we have a breath of fresh air of a new mayor and a new city council with a few new members, we can say, "All right, now is the time." Because love feels good, compassion feels good, and it's also, get this, it's also contagious.
Yes.
And if we can feel what we felt from Teal Fever, from the Jaguars, about painting a building or walking together or, you know, seeing the sheriff, and he started the process of getting in the neighborhoods, but seeing the sheriff get in the neighborhoods with people that support him instead of it being political and having one press conference and one breakfast and taking a breath to heal, we've got a better city, you know, fairly quickly.
You know, certainly, you're not doing this for the money and you're not doing this because you need more cameras pointed at you, but over the years you've been here, you've seen the way that the overall cost of campaigns, even on city council levels on up, has increased. And a lot of that money goes to consultants and advertising buys and things like that. Number one, how is that, how does that have an effect of discouraging regular people from wanting to run for office?
Right.
And given your position as a businessman, do you have sort of a competitive advantage in the sense that you don't, like, as you said, you wanna get fundraising, but you don't need it, you know? Plus, you have a public, you're kind of a public figure.
Right.
You don't have to push as hard to get your face out.
One of my opponents has been running for several years, and I like the guy.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean we don't, you know, disagree on some fundamental issues, but I like the guy. And, you know, he had raised about $80,000 before I ever got in. And, you know, we made a family decision that we can self-fund that.
Yeah.
And it's, and self-fund can be a naughty, you know, a naughty word or buying an election, but let's talk about statistics. Let's talk about the fact that this is, you know, over 60% Democratic district with over 45, 47% minorities. And with the housing crisis, with inflation, with the crime and joblessness in that community, they can't afford to give me $5. And to be able to, you know, pay it forward for people that I've served and that, you know, they can vote and decide whether the investment in myself was worthwhile, that is what it is. But the even cooler thing has been, you know, with a person that's never asked for money for anything, I think, you know, the Real Men Wear Pink campaign, we raised some money and that was awkward, but it was for, you know, cancer. This is the second time that I've ever had to raise money and it's super awkward.
Yeah.
And there's, you know, there's certainly some conflict within that because I'm also for campaign finance reform and not being able to, you know, candidates not being co-dependent on that, but you are, you know? You're darned if you do and darned if you don't, to some extent, because you gotta get out there, you gotta send mailers, you've gotta canvassing, you know, knocking doors, all of that, yard signs cost money. And I didn't get that, right? I didn't, as a pre-candidate, like, why would somebody need to raise, you know, $100,000 or $200,000 for a $45,000, $50,000 a year job? That's a crazy situation. And then extrapolate to the mayor's race, and then we're talking about millions for the mayor's race. But it's, you know, the thing about us is, I don't, the support is important, you know, to have names like, you know, Kim Babi, the owner of the shrimp, and Alan Verlander, and, you know, the business community at large come in and support us, and Bill Bishop and Moose, who everybody knows from having one of the best Duvals in town, and all those folks and, you know, the church community and former JSO officers and veterans and all these folks that are weighing in, you know, it really, it really is contagious that we have something here and, you know, people want change.
Absolutely. You mentioned the business community earlier, you know, we've got Dan Davis running for mayor, president of the Chamber of Commerce. I think there's a perception among the general population that when you talk about the business community, you talk about the ownership class, that it's a, that it skews conservative. But in your experience, when you talk about the business community or the faith community, it's kind of a bipartisan thing. You can find millionaires and billionaires on both sides of the aisle.
Sheldon, all these things link together. And homelessness, houselessness, however you wanna put it, doesn't care what party you're in, they still need resources. And I've been at a Alexander Hamilton event at the library when a person with no other options went in and sat down at our event, fell asleep and urinated on the floor in front of children. And, you know, that's heartbreaking, but that's the only option.
Sure.
And you've got mental, like a mental health treatment and a thousand murders over seven years and, you know, some streets, three tenths of a mile or half a mile down from the stadiums, which are constantly under monitor and, you know, policing is different and, you know, all of that. And then, and then you have some of the JSO issues of not being forthright with public records requests and the Kent Sturman unfettered access despite saying, you know, there's no such thing as a police review, citizens review board, they had a one-man citizens review board. And, you know, all of these issues are not Republican, not Democrat, but linked together.
Yes.
And to be able to go in front of the labor community and the, you know, the chamber and all of that and say, "Look, one of these mayoral candidates has to work with city council and has to bring this together. We can't, we can't get this wrong and have another four or eight years of division." Because that will be 500 more deaths, murders. And so, it's, and perception and reality of Jacksonville and crime affect whether people are going to Nocati and St. John's County. And affect development and affect how quickly renovations happen.
Insurance rates.
Insurance rates and affect, you know, housing. And they're all over, the domino effect is real and we've gotta, we've gotta address it, you know, and the opportunity, I call it Shadville, like, all of that, you know, needs financial auditing and to make a good deal and a long-term deal so we're not held hostage. But it's also gotta take advantage of our workforce and our people and make sure the infrastructure of the area around there is protected and improved. And all of that can work together.
You know, local politics is kind of adversarial, sometimes that's the nature of the game and it's always been that way, but would it be correct to say, as a lot of people seem to feel, that the atmosphere overall has gotten a lot more toxic in the last five or six years? And I'm not, who knows what's happened these last few years that have changed things, but I mean, do, to what extent has the national scene kind of poisoned the dialogue on local and state levels? And is there any way to reverse that process?
I don't know many reasonably prudent people who aren't politically motivated or motivated for lobbying jobs that would do this.
Yeah.
It's, there have been, you know, people who have run for mayor in this office or run for office who have left town.
Yeah.
And that is tragic. You know, the most common comment to me was, "Make sure your wife's okay." Like, "Make sure your wife's okay, the arrows are coming." And because we were involved with the Omarosa versus Trump situation, because I represent somebody like Joe Exotic, because we've had police cases, because we've had controversial cases, you know, doing criminal defense and high-profile civil rights work, like, it's, I've had multiple death threats. I had a death threat today, reference.
Sure.
And, you know, that...
And that's a serious thing to, you have to take that to...
It is. And, you know, even going into Jordan Davis, you know, there was somebody that referenced, you know, needing to have cash in a safe in case my child goes missing. And I think that's a mental illness issue with that particular person. But that's where we are and it's only getting fueled by a more partisan primary system that, you know, is leading us where, you know, to get earned media or to get attention or to keep getting votes and getting elected, you've gotta be more and more bitter and, you know, take away rights or, you know, be polarizing and, you know, gone are the days of reason. And, you know, that's one thing that I wanna bring is, you know, compassion, but compassion in action.
Absolutely. You know, you've always been very transparent about your life, your personal life injuries and efforts you make to improve yourself. From an objective standpoint, do you, what are your flaws or vulnerabilities as a candidate? Or what about this process, how do I put it? What is this process teaching you about yourself and your own method?
A good friend and person who's advised me on politics talked to me about the Wednesday after the election. And the Wednesday after the election, a lot of people start rebuilding bridges and apologizing because of the political process. And I said, "Brother, let me explain how I'm doing it. I'm saying I'm sorry now." And I'm building, you know, rebuilding relationships that got caught up in the competitive process of being a litigator or writing stories that, or publishing stories that people didn't like or tweets, you know? And I'm like, "I look forward to that Wednesday, I think we'll win," you know, "but I'm a better person for this." The other issue, and again, talking about flaws, is, and few people know this about me, but, and I'm not, I'm like, kinda not gonna cry, but, you know, growing up, like, particularly 7th and 8th grade, I was called, I was in a private school for the first, only two years of my life, and I was called Tinker Bell. And it, there was an element of...
And you were in Alabama?
I was in Alabama, Monroeville, Alabama, home of Harper Lee, and where my father's, you know, family was from. And there was, even then, this empath in me that would cry when something happened to somebody, or certainly me. And I've always been oversensitive to others and, you know, had to realize what people sometimes say, you know, sticks and stones, right? And when I reached the end of 8th grade, I said, "You know, Mom, I'm not going back to that school, I wanna go to public school." My dad's like, "No, no, no, you need to stay there." And I was like, "Absolutely not." And we re-enrolled me, we enrolled me in 9th grade in public school and then we moved and I did 10th through 12th in Mobile. And, you know, had a relatively normal experience from there on out. So, let's fast forward to 2021, Tiger King comes out, right? And in November, after it came out of 2021, I got all sorts of weird messages, text messages, people I hadn't seen in 10 years. And this gentleman, Tracy, reached out to me and said, "John, I just watched Tiger King and I don't know if you remember me." And I did, I remember Tracy. And Tracy goes, "I'm proud of you, I'm proud of where you've come and I'm sorry for what I did." And he pretty brutally bullied me.
Yeah.
And like, that's, that's the story of all the kids who didn't fit in, right? But found a voice and moved forward. And we have some of those young men and women who have seen that and wanna volunteer in our campaign and wanna get involved. And I have worn my heart on my sleeve through this. I will choke up if we're talking about, you know, being in the living rooms of family who have lost everything and all that Lucy McBeth and Ron Davis have taught me from the guy that was in the bubble that just was raised, you know, to not hate but to not see color, to not really, to think that everything's okay because, you know, the laws, the Civil Rights Act was enacted, right? That's preposterous, you know, if you actually dig into it, but that's how some folks are raised. And, you know, before Lucy and Ron, but certainly after Lucy and Ron, you know, that allowed me to be okay with the young man I was and kind of the lawyer I'd become in the civil rights portion that's like, "Look..." And it helped that I married an amazing woman who gets that, but, man, it's been a crazy ride. But it's, you know, we all are who we are and we all hurt. And there's people that hurt more and are dealing with tragedies that we can't even fathom and, you know, we just, we just need to stop and take a breath and empathize.
Absolutely. We'll start wrapping it up here shortly, but, you know, we've got 19 city council seats here in Jacksonville and the boundary lines are always kind of wonky. We've just come through this redistricting process with new, you know, new boundaries being drawn. For the benefit of the general here, talk about your district and what the boundaries are like and what types of neighborhoods are...
Right. I call it beautiful District 7. So, December 30th, I saw an Andrew Pentazi tweet about the new districting and saw his map and I was like, "So, this is the new 7, is it valid?" I picked up the phone and he goes, "Well, why do you ask, John?" And I go, "I'm just asking, just curious." And I had my two kids in the car and like, you know, pulled over actually at McDonald's and, and I was like, "It's beautiful." And then we talked statistics and again, it's 60-plus percent Democrat and 45-plus percent minority. And, you know, given the engagement and the fact, many of my clients and a lot of my friends are disenfranchised and we have engagement, you know, in a very diverse community, I was like, "Well, this is something." And, you know, we live on the Ortega Avondale Riverside, which, you know, gauges from pretty hardcore Republican to pretty progressive Democrat. And then you've got kind of the up-and-coming areas and historic areas of Murray Hill and Springfield. And, you know, they're, they're different issues with everything from gentrification to crime and crime next door and, you know, parks. Like, we did a walk with some of the residents in Murray Hill and literally pulled a knife out of a park, Kids Park. And, you know, then you have downtown, which is certainly the business hub, but there's a lot of people that live downtown and have a lot of needs related to that and homeless population and encampments that we're not, we're not even giving them, you know, the ability to be sanitary, we're not even giving garbage service. And, you know, then you get into, you know, the historic East Side and Edward Waters. And, you know, while we've been canvassing there, constant sirens and the first two people, I mean, this is the one that gets me, you know, the first time I'm putting my own shoes to the ground with my 11-year-old, you know, we're literally walking to the first, you know, the first house and a gentleman is out there doing yard work and I go, you know, magic wine thing, like, "What would you improve if you could?" And he goes, "Murder rates." Like, it's real here. And, you know, I'm like, "Okay, thank you." And we go to where the canvassing team is, 'cause I'm trying to learn how to knock doors, like, "What knock do you use and where do you stand?" I'm brand new at this. And there's another woman in the yard and she's smoking a cigarette and just kind of catatonic. And I kind of felt it, right? Before she told me. And she goes, "My son was murdered recently and JSO, you know, won't do the report and they won't investigate." And, you know, they said that this is just kind of part of the process and they'll get to it. And I'm like, "No, no, 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 like, that, why is that life handled differently than, you know, anybody else?" And, you know, it winds up being a canvassing, a counseling session instead of a canvassing session. And then literally, the next door we knocked on, the woman talked about how her son was murdered six months ago. So, the two first, you know, two out of the three first encounters on the historic East Side were murder victims, you know, two of the 1,000-plus. And I'm there with my son who doesn't have that as a threat. And... and is listening to this. And part of me as a dad, like, wants to put earmuffs on him and say, "You don't want to hear this." Like, "This is beyond PG-13, son." But he's been raised in Jordan Davis and walking MLK parades and understanding that this is a city that we've got to figure out and, you know, we have to do so with that in mind. And you can't, you can't be beamed down into that and see this as a race or see this as political opportunity or see this as, you know, a game or hashtag.
You have to engage it for itself.
You have, these are mothers who lost their children. And that, you know, that to me is, those are the living rooms I've been in. And, you know, the divine intervention to put me there and have me affected by that, you know, kind of was all I needed to say, "Let's go." Like, "Let's do, let's knock until dark."
And the way this new district is laid out, it kind of seems almost tailor-made for your skill set and like kind of the diversity of your connections and things like that. Being a father, how does being a father make you better at what you do?
It's, it's going back to my mother's promise. So my mother died and my son was born two months later. And, you know, she looked at pictures of ultrasound and just tried to emphasize to me that you won't know love until you hold it in your hands, right? And to watch Bennett go from that to an 11-year-old child and have, you know, two more boys. And to realize this is their town. Like, I'm not a Jackson, right? I've been here 20-plus years, but, you know, I wasn't Duval-born. They were. And certainly, we can go move to Atlanta or New York City and do celebrity litigation and get caught up in that, but we don't want that. Like, we need to change this city and we do it for them. And I do it, they'd never call me a hypocrite. But if I'm just getting people after it's too late and trying to fix their problems, you know, whether they've been arrested or whether their child's been murdered, and I'm just sweeping up and trying to bring, you know, love and support to them instead of fixing the problem and criminal justice reform or whatever measures we can take to moderate the problems in this city, then we've got both, right? Then we have an opportunity to make things better. And that's my commitment to not just my children, but, you know, the children we've met, you know, walking these streets. That they're the ones at risk. They're the ones with schools that aren't up to the level of other people in schools, right? There's inequality in schools, there's inequality in roads, there's inequality in sewage system and septic tanks. There's inequality, you know, all around town. And we've got to start, you know, using federal funding that's going untapped and using city resources and being, you know, studious about money and making sure it's not being self-service, you know? And using, you know, funding groups like Mad Dads instead of, you know, organizations from outside the city. And all of that are incremental changes that'll make a difference pretty quickly.
Well, thank you very much. This is John M. Phillips, the former publisher of Folio Weekly. Now he is a candidate for city council District Seven. You can read more about him and all the local elections in general right here in the pages of Folio Weekly.
Thank you, Sheldon.